Good afternoon. This is Jim Thornton, Mayor of the City of LaGrange, and I would like to call to order this regular meeting of the LaGrange City Council, which is being conducted in a somewhat irregular fashion. We are conducting this meeting by video conference, telephone conference, and Facebook Live. This is the second time we have had to do a meeting under very difficult circumstances because of the coronavirus emergency that our community is suffering from, as well as the entire world. But what we are doing today is I am actually in city council chambers on Ridley Avenue with our city clerk and a couple of members of our city staff who are keeping the appropriate distance. But we are being joined by all six members of the LaGrange City Council by video conference. So we have joining us on the conference council members Mayor Protem Nathan Gaskin, council members Tom Gore, Mark Mitchell, Legree McCamey, Jim Arrington, and Willie Edmondson. You are also able to join us by calling in and listening by audio to the conference call number that we established, or you can certainly be watching and following along with us on Facebook Live. So I appreciate everybody's interest in this meeting. We have some very important things to cover tonight, and so I'm going to get to our agenda. But in keeping with our tradition and seemingly very appropriate at this particular time in our nation, I'm going to begin by asking Councilman Legree McCamey to open us with a word of invocation in prayer, and then that will be followed by the pledge of allegiance. So I will ask everybody to stand. Councilman McCamey.
Oh heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to congregate and meet where in our various places, oh God. Right now, we invoke your power and ask for your wisdom and your guidance as we continue to implement and strategize for the better lifestyle of our people. Oh God, we give the coronavirus over to you. We ask that you would help us go through as we continue day by day. We ask all of this in the Holy Person's name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. At this time, if you will, join me in the pledge of allegiance to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Council members have all been given a copy of the minutes of our regular council meeting held on March the 10th, 2020, as well as the minutes of our emergency meeting held on March the 17th, 2020. Council members have had a chance to review those minutes, and we do need to approve them. Because of the way we're doing this meeting by technology, I am going to, I'm going to ask if any council member would like to make that motion and/or second that motion. I have Councilman McCamey already open on audio. Councilman McCamey, would you like to make a motion?
Motion approved.
Okay. Do, I see a hand from Councilman Arrington. Would you introduce yourself and make your statement?
Councilman Jim Arrington.
You got me? Yes.
Councilman Jim Arrington, I'd like to second the motion.
Okay. So at this time, I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes. And so what I'm going to do is go down and do a roll call of council members, and when I call your name, if you will just simply state for the record your name and how you vote, yea or nay, on the motion to approve the minutes. So we'll begin with Mayor Protem Nathan Gaskin. That was a yea. We will turn to Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mark Mitchell, yea.
And then we'll turn to Councilman Jim Arrington.
Councilman Jim Arrington, yea.
Councilman Legree McCamey.
Councilman Legree McCamey, yea.
Councilman Tom Gore.
Councilmember Tom Gore, yea.
And Councilman Willie Edmondson. Hold on, Willie, I'm sorry, I didn't get to you quick enough. If you'll start over.
Willie Edmondson, yea.
Okay. So I have six yays. The minutes from both meetings are unanimously approved. At this time, I will turn to our city manager, Ms. Kelsey, and I will ask her, if she will, to provide a city manager report.
Yes, sir, this is Meg Kelsey. I am in City Hall in my office. I just wanted to give the council and the public a brief update on city services. The city continues to run in full operation with our focus being on preventing exposure and also following the CDC guidelines for proper lodging. All of our services continue to be offered. Per your last emergency ordinance last week, city buildings have been closed off to the public, but again, we are here working. Just also wanted to let you know, I have reviewed the U.S. Department of Homeland Security's guidance on essential services. After that review, I have found that about 98% of our services are defined by the federal government as essential. We have also clarified policies with our city employees on instances when they have to become isolated because they're ill or because they're quarantined because they've come into contact with someone with this virus. We have also established protocol for the return to work, and we are basically following the CDC guidelines as it relates to return to work. We continue to push with our employees, I've been sending out letters periodically to encourage them, if they get sick, to stay at home, to practice the social distancing with a six-foot distance from others, to wash their hands regularly, and to refrain from touching their faces. Our public safety personnel, our fire and police, have implemented the proper protocols to try to prevent exposure, and in the event of exposure, they have guidance and basically guidelines to follow as it relates to any exposure that they might come into contact with. I can't say enough great things about our communication staff and all the work that they are continuing to do to get the message out to our community about the coronavirus. As you know, we now have a website that our staff put together called coronavirus.lagrange.ca.org. I encourage all of our citizens to go there to get information. We are loading information hourly, minute by minute sometimes. We are also pushing out social media posts and Facebook Live events. I know the council is concerned about our financial exposure, and we have established an account to track those expenses. So as this situation progresses, I will be able to give you easily that information on those exposures financially. I'll be glad to answer any questions that the mayor and council have at this time about city operations. I did want to thank all of you for adapting very quickly to this new technology. Been here over 20 years and never had a council meeting that I had to talk to you via teleconference. So just really appreciate all of you and how quickly you've adapted to get this done, and our staff for setting this up.
Great, thank you, thank you, Ms. Kelsey. What I'm going to do is ask if any council members, because I can see you all on my screen, if any council member has a question for the city manager, please raise your hand. I'm not, I'm not seeing any. Okay. So I skipped over this on the agenda, not intentionally, it was just an oversight, but we did, do any council members have anything they would like to report on tonight before we go on to consideration of potential ordinance? Any council members have anything they would like to report on? If so, raise your hand. And I am not, I see Dr. Edmondson always, so I will open up, all right, Dr. Edmondson, you are, you are open.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thanks to our city manager and staff, and especially our city attorney for doing, I mean, getting together and putting all this stuff together in a hurry to actually address the needs of our community. I want to thank our mayor for being innovative also. I just thank the council as well. We're all working hard, and I think the citizens of LaGrange needs to know that we have their concern, their interests at heart, and we're trying our best to make sure that everybody's safe. So I just thank the staff and you, Mr. Mayor, and the entire city of LaGrange that's been working so hard, especially our people on the front line, or as the ambulance drivers, the firefighters, as well as the police officers. So thank you so very much. That's my report.
Well, thank you, Dr. Edmondson. I appreciate you sharing that, and I certainly echo the words that you have expressed and appreciation to the staff and all of our citizens. Particularly thank our council members for adapting and for helping to be a part of this response to this particular crisis. Thank you for your leadership. I'm guessing that probably most of the council members would echo exactly what you said. If there's, if there's any council member who would like to disagree with that, what Dr. Edmondson has said, please raise your hand, but I'm not, I'm not seeing any other council members at this time seeking recognition. So thank you for those, those words. At this time, we will, we will turn to a potential new ordinance for consideration by the council. I did want to just make a few introductory comments to it, and then I'm going to turn it over to our city manager to walk us through that. It goes without saying that these are very difficult times, and everyone, and I underscore that, everyone is suffering. There is no one that I'm aware of who is doing well in this particular time in dealing with this particular virus. But we are getting through it as a community because we have people who care about their neighbors, we have businesses trying to follow best practices, and we have community leaders who work well together. There's no better evidence than that than the six members of the LaGrange City Council who work well together, who are trying to do what's in the best interest of all of us in the community. We have some great examples of individuals and businesses that have been doing the right thing, that have been responding to the CDC guidelines, the public health guidelines, and they have, and they have been doing what they needed to protect themselves and their friends and their coworkers and employees. Unfortunately, we've also got some folks who simply haven't been doing the right thing and who haven't been following all of those guidelines, and that's unfortunate. We all know that Governor Brian Kemp has addressed some of those issues recently, but his statewide guidance left a few gaps that we would like to fill locally, and we've been trying to figure out how we can. Let me mention that under the governor's emergency declaration, cities are authorized and empowered to make orders and regulations that they deem necessary for emergency purposes. But here's the key limitation: so long as the city rules only supplement what the governor's orders have done and are not inconsistent with the governor's orders or the orders of any state agency that he has delegated powers to, which in this case is the Georgia Department of Public Health. I have spoken with our city attorney, I have also spoken and participated in conference calls with the leadership of the Georgia Municipal Association, which is the organization that represents all 538 cities in Georgia, which I happen to be second vice president of, and I've spoken with several other mayors from across the state. Everyone is in the same boat, and everyone is struggling with these same issues. Quite frankly, we were expecting, and some of us were even hoping, that Governor Kemp would go further than he did yesterday. But he is balancing the same competing concerns we are: individual rights and the need for business and economic activity to continue on the one hand versus the overwhelming public health danger and the concerns for our citizens, and the need to manage scarce medical resources on the other hand. There is a real tension here, and everyone is having the same struggle. Here's the law: the state allows us to supplement the governor, but anything we do has to be reasonable under the circumstances, and anything we adopt has to be narrowly tailored to fit the facts of the crisis. In other words, the mayor and council don't have discretion to just do anything we want that we think might be a good idea. We have to be limited in our approach. We can't pass general blanket rules that aren't specifically related to responding to the specific threat of the public health emergency. Therefore, after consultation with GMA, with other mayors across the state, and our city attorney and city manager, I have proposed, and the council members have seen, and our city manager has seen, some additional rules that the city council will consider tonight. I would like to mention, both for the city council members and particularly for the public, that we have shared these provisions with Dr. Obasanja at the District Four Public Health Office and with Coleman Foss at Wellstar West Georgia. Both of them recommend adoption of these rules. I have also shared this language with the mayor of Hogansville and the mayor of West Point, as well as the chairman of the Truke County Board of Commissioners, and I believe that they may very well follow similar rules. The proposal that we have on the table is not going to satisfy everybody. In fact, it may not satisfy anybody because we are developing rules in a totally new environment that no one has ever seen before, and we're trying to balance lots of different competing interests. But we're trying to take this serious, we're trying to do what we can to supplement the governor and to fill these local gaps and to respond to the crisis in a meaningful and effective way. So the proposal will be to amend the emergency ordinance that we considered last week with some additional restrictions to fill in some of those gaps. And at this time, I'm going to ask city manager Meg Kelsey to walk us through those specific additional considerations.
Thank you, Mayor. We will go section by section, and what I will try to do first is I will summarize the section, and then I will read the entirety of the section, and then we can have discussion on the section, and I hope that will be amenable to all. So we will start with our first section, which addresses restaurants and other dining establishment where food is served. And so basically, this would prohibit dine-in services but allow people to continue through delivery, through drive-through, and takeout services. And I will say that many of our restaurants in LaGrange have already moved in this direction, and we certainly appreciate that. The second part of this section also talks about allowing restaurants that have licenses to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption, the ability to sell unopened bottles or cans of beer or wine for takeout consumption. Many of our businesses have contacted us and asked us to do this. We have seen where other cities in the state have moved in that direction as well. And then finally, in this section, it would allow the city manager to designate public parking spaces to facilitate takeout and curbside orders. Now I'm going to go back and read to you the exact language as it is in the ordinance. Restaurants and other eating and dining establishments where food is served must cease offering dine-in services but may continue preparing and offering food to customers via delivery, drive-through, or takeout services. Patrons, employees, and contractors of the establishment must maintain at least six feet of personal distance between themselves as much as possible, given the physical constraints of the premise. If a restaurant is licensed to sell beer and wine for on-premise consumption, such restaurant during the affected dates of this ordinance only shall be authorized to sell unopened bottles or cans of beer or wine for takeout consumption off-premise. On request of any individual restaurant within the central business district, city manager is authorized to temporarily designate public parking spaces to facilitate takeout and curbside orders.
Thank you, Ms. Kelsey. I'm going to, what I'm going to do is pause at the end, we've got six sections that are potentially for consideration by the council, and I'm going to stop at the end of each of the six and ask if I have any council members that would like to ask a question about that particular section. So I'm looking for a show of hands from any council members who have a question. I see Dr. Gore. Dr. Gore, you're open.
Thank you. Mayor and city manager, I was curious how those parking spaces might be designated? Would there be a temporary sign placed, or would it be restriping, or how would that actually be done?
I was thinking that potentially we could take cones and give those to those businesses to allow them maybe two parking spaces per business, so that they could put those cones out there, since this won't be a long duration. I don't want to go out and strike new parking spaces or have to put up signs, if that's agreeable to the council.
That sounds good to me.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Gore. Do any other council members have a question about section one before we move to section two? I'm not seeing any, so Ms. Kelsey, if you'll move on to, I should say section four, the way the numbering is, because there's some preliminary, there's some preliminary legalese that our city attorney has inserted here to assert our authority to do some of this. So let's move on to the substantive section, section number four.
Yes, sir, this section really goes to the heart of trying to prohibit large gathering spots, though it details out what facilities must close and remain closed during the duration. I'll just go ahead and read this section because it's very short. Gems, fitness centers, indoor amusement facilities, bowling alleys, pool halls, theaters, massage parlors, nail salons, hair salons, and any other similar facility must close and remain closed for the duration of this emergency.
Okay. And just to clarify for the record for anyone who doesn't recall, the duration of the emergency is 60 days unless the mayor and council extend that or renew it, or unless we rescind it earlier than that. And hopefully, we will be able to rescind it earlier, but we'll just see how this, how this all develops. Do I have any council members by show of hands who would like to ask a question about this section number four? I'm seeing Dr. Gore, and he's the only one. Dr. Gore, I'm gonna, you're, you're open.
This question for the city manager, what about barber shop?
I would certainly think that would fall under hair salons, but we could detail about barber shops. You wanted to include that language, just to be specific and clear?
I would assume my reading of it would see that as being similar, and the wording similar is there, but it might be helpful.
So I'm, I'm looking, Dr. Gore, at the city attorney, and he's making a note of that, so since it's a, since this is a work in progress, if you will, I don't see any problem with inserting barber shops into the proposed language. Jeff, are you in agreement with that? If you'll just nod or shake your head. He's nodding yes. So, so we will, we will add that if there's no objection to the proposal. Is there any other council member would have a question about this section? Okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any. So, Ms. Kelsey, if you will, let's move on to, to section number five.
Yes, sir. So this addresses businesses that are going to be open during this emergency, requiring them to post signage on the entrance doors and informing their customers that they need to remain six feet apart from one another. I'll go ahead and read this section, Mayor.
Please do.
Establishments, sorry?
Please, yes.
Okay, sorry. Establishments such as grocery stores, pharmacies, and other retail businesses which remain open during the emergency must post signage on entrance doors informing consumers to maintain at least six feet of personal distance between themselves and others as much as possible, given the physical constraints of the premise.
So are there any questions about this signage requirement? And I'm looking for council members for a show of hands. And I'm not seeing any. Oh, I've got, I've got Councilman Mitchell, so I'm, Councilman Mitchell, you're open.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Mark Mitchell, can we just go back to section four for just a second? And since Dr. Gore brought that up about barber shops, can we also include tattoo parlors also?
I don't have, I don't have any problem with that. Do any council members have any concerns about Councilman Mitchell's proposal to also insert tattoo parlors in the, in the list? I'm not seeing any concern, so for purposes of the proposal, and understand, and I want to remind our viewers that we are not adopting this yet, we're just, you're watching the sausage being made. You're watching us go through this ordinance line by line and tweaking it as we need to, and then at the very end of this process, we will, we will open it up for consideration by the council by vote. So, but, but for now, for the proposal, we will add the tattoo parlors. And I will, if there's no, if there's no concerns with that, we'll move on to section six.
Yes, sir. This section deals with prohibiting gatherings, either public or private, of more than 10 people, which has been the guideline set forth via Governor Kemp and also President Trump. And I'll go ahead and read this short section. All public and private gatherings of 10 or more people occurring outside of the household or living unit are prohibited. Nothing in this ordinance, however, prohibits the gathering of individuals for the purposes of carrying non-business certified as essential by the Georgia Emergency Management Agency pursuant to OCGA Section 38358 or designated by the governor as critical infrastructure for the provision of medical or health services.
Okay. So Ms. Kelsey has gone through section seven, or six, I should say, six. Do any council members have any questions about that? I'm looking for a show of hands. And not surprisingly, I have a question from Dr. Gore. Dr. Gore, you're unmuted.
Thank you. Could we go back to section five? I have a question.
Yes.
Businesses, customers are to maintain the six-foot distance. For example, grocery store, we've all probably, grocery stores that would only let into the store a certain number of people at a time, and we're not talking about that, we're just talking about whoever is in the grocery store would have to be socially distanced six feet.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
I think it's important for our grocery stores to realize that we're not putting any restriction on the number of people who can come in the door.
So, so, yeah, and just to clarify that, Dr. Gore, so we're not putting a restriction on anybody based on an actual number, but by default, if you will, there is going to be a capacity, right? Because, I mean, there is, a smaller grocery store is going to be able to allow fewer people in and still maintain the six feet than a larger grocery store where you could have more people in. So there is, there is an inherent limitation. We're not setting it, we're just following the CDC guideline of the six-foot distancing, and then it will be, it will be dependent on their physical location.
Thank you. That's fine. And I did a question on six also.
Okay.
I think a number of people are planning weddings, and there will unfortunately be more funeral, and these 10 people applies to those situations. Is that correct?
I think it would, yes.
I'm in agreement with that, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay. Does any other council members have any questions or comments? I'm looking for a show of hands. I see Councilman Gaskin. Okay, Nathan, you're open.
Greetings, Councilman Gaskin. I have a question about Section 5 as well as it concerns restaurants. I just need to clarification on some of the smaller kitchens such as checkers, crystals, and those smaller confined kitchen areas. Now, are we talking about the six feet just to clients and customers or to the workhorse as well?
So I think the answer to that is that Governor Kemp, in his order, has already imposed that restriction on all businesses as it relates to employees and customers. All we're doing by supplementing the governor is we're not changing that restriction, we're just providing that notice has to be given to the customers. So this particular provision would apply to the customers of the establishment. Again, because Governor Kemp has already, in his order, applied a generic standard that requires the six feet, which would apply to the employees, and he has given, and this is important, he has given the Department of Public Health the authority to enforce that in his executive order. So if somebody believes that a business or restaurant, whatever, is not abiding by those restrictions, then they would need to contact District 4 Public Health. That would be the enforcement agency for the governor's order. What would be, what we would be enforcing would be the signage, which is helping to provide notice to all of our citizens, all of the customers, about the importance of this.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions from council members? I'm looking for a show of hands, and I don't see any. So Ms. Kelsey, we will move on to Section 7.
Yes, sir. So this really addresses me. If I was unable to perform my duties, that this would allow me to designate an emergency successor. If anything were to happen to that successor, those duties would fall to the mayor. I would just have the council, you know, if anything did happen and I was unable to perform the duties, I would designate our utility director, who's been here over 30 years, and I have full faith and confidence in him to carry out the mission of the city if that were to happen. So I will read that section now. The governor's authority desires to make certain that the chain of authority within the city management is clear. If the city manager is unable to perform her duties, then the individual designated by the city manager as the emergency interim successor pursuant to OCGA Section 38350 shall assume the duties of the city manager. If the emergency interim successor be unable to perform those duties, as the mayor, be unable to perform those duties, the mayor, as chief executive officer of the city, shall assume those duties.
All right, well, I will speak to that. We're not going to let that happen, okay? I just want you all to understand, we're not going to let that happen. Ms. Kelsey is going to be on the job for the duration of this crisis, and I'm confident of that. Do any council members have any question about this, about this provision? I'm not seeing any. So we will move on to the last section, Ms. Kelsey.
So the last section addresses imposing a curfew from the hours of 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. It does provide exemption for certain individuals, and I'll just go ahead and read that section because it outlines who those individuals are. A curfew is imposed from 10:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m. effective immediately. Residents, unless exempt individuals herein to find, shall remain in their homes or on their property during the curfew period. Exempt individuals include those individuals engaged in the provision of designated essential services such as one, fire; two, law enforcement; three, medical and hospital services; four, military services; five, utility repairs; six, persons seeking medical services or hospital services; seven, individuals traveling to and from their jobs with appropriate identification; eight, individuals engaged in the delivery of food, medicine, medical supplies, you will including but not limited to the restocking of grocery stores, pharmacies, and convenience stores; nine, individuals engaged in the retrieval or transport of bodies under the direction of funeral service personnel; ten, news media employees; eleven, designated employees or agents of business designated by the Georgia Emergency Management Agencies as essential pursuant to OCGA Section 38358; twelve, persons providing necessary care of companion animals in the custody and care of an animal shelter, boarding facility, or kennel; and finally, thirteen, critical infrastructure businesses and employees as designated by the governor or identified by the U.S. Department of Homeland Security, Cybersecurity, and Infrastructure Security Agency.
Do I have a question from Councilman Edmondson? So, Edmondson, you're open.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to know exactly what type of identification they need because I have employees that will be going out possibly at night, and just to know exactly what type of identification they need because I'm pretty sure they will be stopped at that time of night.
I think that's a, I think that's a good question, and I think that we would probably, we probably would rely upon the police department to provide some guidance for that, but I don't know. Chief Deckmar is actually here in the room, and if he would like to say something, I know I'm on camera, but if, do you have an idea on that, Chief? Or if you just want to say it to me, I can repeat it, yeah? Don't get so close. Okay, we can open up that microphone, yeah, okay.
Just like all the other ordinances we enforce, we handle 50,000 to 60,000 calls for service and citizen contacts a year. Of those, we 90% of the time resolve it without any enforcement action, and so I would expect that we would look for those sort of individuals that are out and about, seemingly not going from point A to point B, and then just advise them of the curfew. I would not expect significant enforcement action as a result of this ordinance. Most of the time, we get compliance once folks are made aware of the violation.
Mayor, can you summarize that for us? It's kind of a little garbled and hard to hear.
Sure, sure. So basically, Dr. Edmondson, to your question, Chief Deckmar said that his officers would be instructed to use discretion and to recognize that, you know, that they're going to have to rely upon different forms of identification. Obviously, if an employee has a, has a business card or has a badge or something like that, that's a, that's an easy thing. But he said that in his, in his experience, it was usually pretty obvious if someone was going from point A to point B for business purposes as opposed to just sort of hanging out and sort of milling about. But he also said that if he does encounter, if his officers encounter people who are just hanging out, milling about, in violation of the curfew, that he doesn't intend to effect a custodial arrest, instead, his officers would advise them to go home or to disperse or go back to, you know, to their, to their place of business as opposed to, as opposed to taking them to, taking them into custody. Does that, does that, does that answer the question? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Edmondson. Great question. Do I have any other council members that have, have Councilman Arrington? Okay, you're open.
Yeah. Councilman Jim Arrington. Mayor, I just wanted to say that I really don't agree with this ordinance, Section 8. If we vote and approve the rest of the ordinance, then there's really not any reason for people to be out after 10:00. I just, I just don't know that taking this ride away from our citizens is going to be very beneficial for the fight in the coronavirus. And I could be wrong, but that's, that's my personal opinion.
Okay. So to that point, what I'm intending to do, the reason I wanted to go through these sections item by item, is because at the appropriate time, we could entertain a motion to remove one or more of the particular items that have been put forth in the proposal. We're not, you know, it's not an all or nothing sort of thing. So to that point, Councilman Mayor, I thank you for sharing your concern and potential opposition to the curfew. I'm looking to see if any other council members would like to speak, and I see Councilman Gaskin. So Councilman Gaskin, your line is open.
Greetings, once again. My question is, I was not under the impression that this is going to be so immediate. I think Ms. Kelsey said that it's effective immediately, that the curfew will go into effect tonight, but then I have a problem. Number one, how are we going to notify 30,000 residents that there's a curfew in effect? Number two, you're forcing the police to actually interact with the public, which what we don't want them to do unnecessarily. There has to be some sort of educational process via media, via over a period of time, to keep the police from engaging with the public unnecessarily. So maybe a 48-hour delay, three, four-hour delay? I know time is of the essence here, but every time you're notifying somebody that they're, that they're in violation of the curfew, you're exposing yourself. That's if you do it face-to-face. Now, I mean, if they want to broadcast it from a PA system from the car, then I guess that would resolve that issue. But I fear that putting an officer in a confrontational situation with the public, and it may not even be, even if it's just verbally, as far as I'm concerned, it's too close for comfort.
Thank you for sharing that. Let me, let me mention one, one thing that we haven't focused on in going through the ordinance, but we do, we do actually have a 24-hour delay in the effective, effectiveness of this ordinance. So all of these provisions, as they relate to businesses, restaurants, curfew, all of the, the ordinance provisions would not be effective until 5:00 p.m. tomorrow under the proposal. And the reason for that is exactly what you described, because, you know, obviously, the businesses have to be notified, et cetera, et cetera. We thought 24 hours would be enough. Certainly, we could delay it another 24 hours, or we could simply, if the council, so if the council adopted the curfew, what we could do is we could, as part of that, direct the city manager and staff to, and we've done this before, to go through an educational process for maybe the first, the first few days before they started actual enforcement. And we've done that, I think we did that with the dog tethering ordinance when we originally adopted it. We made it effective immediately, but we asked the city staff to recognize that there needs to be an educational process before we start writing tickets or things like that, right? So, I mean, I think we could do something similar with the curfew, and I'm, I'm kind of looking at Chief Deckmar. I know y'all can't see him, but I can, and he's, he's nodding his head that he could, he could, he could definitely go through an educational process with people before they did any kind of enforcement, obviously. But also, I think our staff can push this out. I tell you, the one thing I've discovered about, about this Corona crisis is that people are watching, you know? People are paying attention, and they, they're, they're following what we do, but we still can go through an educational process like you've outlined, if you, if you feel like the 24-hour delay is sufficient with those caveats. Now, you're open, Nathan.
And just one more thing, I just don't want this to turn into, as Jim is alluding to, a violation of people's civil liberties. I know that we need to do something, but I just don't want this to turn, you know, I don't want this ordinance to be used as PC, to be used as probable cause for engagement because that's not its intent. But I feel that there are some police officers that would use this ordinance as probable cause to engage with certain, with a certain segment of the population. I don't need that in my community. Now, if you want to tell them that, you know, it's not safe for you to be outside of your home, that's one thing, but the whole thing about engaging and asking for ID, I've got a problem with that.
Thank you. I understand that, and I, I think that that has been heard, that message has been heard. So do I have any other council members that would like to speak on this particular Section 8, the curfew section? We've heard from Councilman Gaskin, Councilman Arrington. I'm scrolling across, I've seen Ms. Kelsey. Oh, I do, yeah. Let me go to Councilman Mitchell. You're open.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to have the police chief's opinion as to whether he wants, he needs this enacted or not.
Chief, do you have an opinion about the, and you're talking about the curfew provision specifically?
Yes, I want to know if he, if he thinks this will be beneficial for his police officer or not.
If you're asking for a recommendation, I don't feel very strongly in support of this. I don't believe that with the businesses closing down, that this is something that is immediately necessary. I think that a provision for a curfew, if we anticipate or we expect or we see difficulties, would be appropriate, but at this time, I have found that when we ask folks to do things, they understand the significance of this event, and we get voluntary compliance. I'm also concerned that, you know, there may be some quarters of our community that would resent this, and it would place, I think, a difficult enforcement burden on us.
Was that come through, Mark?
Yes, it did. Thank you for the question.
Thank you. I'm going to Dr. Gore.
Thank you, Mayor. On the issue of curfew, the question is, the things we've already discussed didn't have any time of day associated with them, and it seems like that would take care of most of the needs without specifying that something different has to happen at night. So I'm leaning towards thinking this might not be necessary as well.
Okay. So I'm getting that, and do any other council members have anything they would like to say about the curfew provision? I'm looking for hands. I'm scrolling across, and I'm not seeing any. Ms. Kelsey, did you have something else you would like to add? Hold on a second. You're open.
I'm sorry, Mayor. I was just going to add that on that first line of Section 8, we would remove effective immediately. I think this has been very fluid over the past couple of days of writing, and that just got overlooked to remove as Section 9 addresses the effective date as March 19th. So if the council chooses to keep it in there, I think we would just strike that effective immediately language.
Okay. Okay, so I've got, I'm going to Councilman Arrington, then I'll come to Councilman Edmondson. So Councilman Arrington's open.
Mr. Mayor, just one more thing on the curfew. I just, I just believe it would be better for us to use our police resources in other ways besides, you know, having to enforce a curfew, so I just wanted to put that out there, too.
Okay. So let me come to Councilman Edmondson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I was trying to figure out what number on the, is that, is that number 5?
That's number 8. It's actually, in the actual ordinance, it's Section 8. Am I correct on that?
When we get ready, we can, we can both strike that number 8.
You, if you would like to, you could make a motion to strike number 8.
Okay.
Do I have any other discussion before I ask for motions on the proposed ordinance? I have, Dr. Gore.
Thank you, Mayor. One more question. Where did the curfew idea come from? What, what would be the benefit of that from a public health standpoint?
So I can speak to that. The curfew is included in the Georgia Municipal Association Model Ordinance. So we took it essentially verbatim from the GMA Model Ordinance that was released early this morning by GMA as a recommendation for all of our cities across the state to consider. And obviously, some cities have adopted curfews in response to this coronavirus situation. Other cities have gone even further and not have just nighttime curfews, but to have 24-hour, if you will, I guess that's not really a curfew, that's more like a lockdown. So, I mean, there are, there are lot, there's lots of variation out there because of the lack of a statewide rule from the governor. each individual city and county are looking to these particular provisions. But that is the answer to your question. That is where this language came from, was straight from the GMA Model Ordinance. Do I have any other council members who would like to ask a question about this ordinance? We have not actually, let me clarify for the record, we have not actually had the reading of the ordinance yet. We are just still discussing it, and so it is still very easy to modify. So if, before we read the formal ordinance, if you would like to make a motion to modify it, previously, we made a couple of very minor tweaks, sort of by unanimous consent, if you will, because there was no objection. But if there is a recommendation here, I'm hearing the sense of the council is to remove Section 8 from the ordinance. But we would need a motion from a council member to that effect, if that's the direction you want to go. And so I'm seeing Councilman, Mayor approaching him, Gaskin raising his hand. So Councilman Gaskin, you're open.
I would like to make a motion to remove Section 8.
All right, I have a motion from Councilman Gaskin to remove Section 8. Is there anybody who would like to offer a second? If so, please raise your hand. I see Councilman Arrington, so he's open.
I second that motion.
Okay. So I now have a motion and a second to remove Section 8 from the proposal, that is, to remove the curfew provision. What I'm going to do is ask, is there any discussion on the motion to remove the curfew provision? I'm looking for a show of hands from council members. I'm not seeing any discussion. So what I'm going to do for the record is I'm going to go down the list and go down my screen and open everybody up and ask you if you would state your name and vote either yea or nay on the motion to remove Section 8. So Councilman Arrington.
Councilman Arrington, yea, to remove Section 8.
All right, and Councilman Gaskin?
Councilman Gaskin, voting yea, to remove Section 8.
And then I'm going to Councilman Gore.
Tom Gore votes yea.
Okay. And then I will go to Councilman Edmondson.
Deputy Edmondson, vote yea.
Okay. And I will come to Councilman McCamey.
Lieutenant McCamey, yea.
All right, so I think I have everybody, right? Yeah. No, oh, I've got to get Councilman Mitchell, sorry, sorry, Mark. Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell votes yea.
Okay. So I have a unanimous vote of the city council to remove Section 8, the curfew, from the proposal. That will result in a renumbering, Lawyer Todd, of the provisions, but we will, if there is no other discussion from the council, and I'm looking for a show of hands, if there is no other discussion, I will ask our city attorney to read the proposed ordinance as it has been amended by the council, to just read the caption and understanding the amendments that we have made. So I have opened the city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. An amended emergency ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Lagrange to amend the code of the city to temporarily prohibit dine-in services within eating establishments in the city, to require the temporary closure of certain businesses, to prohibit certain gatherings, and to require personal distance spacing, to provide for interim succession of the city manager, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Okay. So we have, the ordinance is now before us. Is there a council member who would like to make a motion? I see Councilman Edmondson, so I'm opening you up.
Motion to accept.
Okay, so I have a motion from Councilman Edmondson to approve the ordinance. I also have a hand from Councilman McCamey.
Second, that motion.
Okay. So I have a motion and a second from the council to approve the ordinance as it has been amended. I'm now going to ask if there is discussion, and Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Mark Mitchell. Could you clarify for the people watching on Facebook and for myself, this is, as I understand, we're saying 60 days on the closure of these facilities? And what is the, I mean, we're obviously shooting for something a lot less than that. I mean, I think we're going to have a lot of people that are worried about their income, rightfully so, but, I mean, if things start to turn around, we can hopefully lighten the provisions of this ordinance, correct?
That is absolutely correct. The charter of the city only allows us to do emergency ordinances for up to two months. That's the limit that we have. Now, the council can renew emergency ordinances, but that's the maximum that an emergency ordinance can last. But the council has authority at any time during the emergency to lift the ordinance. So we had to put in a termination date, and that began on March the 17th, when we declared the emergency. So we're already seven days into it. But the ordinance will expire on its own terms at the end of that 60-day period. But if the council chooses to terminate it sooner, then certainly the council can do that at any time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question from Dr. Edmondson.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I know that this is going to put a hardship on the barbers, the beauticians, some small mom-and-pop businesses as well. And I was wondering, is there anything we can do as far as to help alleviate some of the problems with utilities? Maybe defray that utility on those type businesses that's having to close until after this stuff is over?
And so, Dr. Edmondson, let me tell you what the city manager and I have discussed along those lines. We obviously, as part of the emergency ordinance last week, provided that we would not cut anybody off. And so there won't be a termination of service simply because of non-payment. Of course, as we know, the meters will continue to run. What the city manager and I discussed was revisiting that issue at the conclusion of the emergency, because it will differ based upon how long it lasts, obviously. If the emergency lasts for two weeks, that's one thing. If it lasts for six months, that's a totally different issue. And so we will need to revisit that question at that time. We know that people's bills will continue to accrue, and that they may need some help with that. We may need to consider some type of adjustment on the back end. But I think the message for right now would be, no one's going to lose service for non-payment, and that the council is very sensitive to this issue, and will, depending on the circumstances that obtain over the next few weeks, we may have to make some kind of adjustments. But right now, it would sort of be a shot in the dark, because we just don't know what that would end up looking like. Is that sufficient in the way of answers?
It is, I just don't know what we're going to, I just want to do some type of relief for some of these guys, because that's their livelihood. They have nothing else to do but cut hair, or fix these latest, fixing hair and things of that nature. And so it just, it saddens me, but I know we have to do something. But I'm just, I was trying to figure out something to help alleviate this. Maybe we need to talk to maybe the clergy or some of the organizations around and see if we can sort of do something to help them out.
And so the other question related to that will be that there are lots of people who are going to be out of work. So, you know, there's lots of people, both business owners, and I think we, I participated in a conference call last week with the small business owners in the community through the Chamber of Commerce. They had a conference call, over 100 small business owners participating in that call. Many of those businesses are suffering tremendously. And hopefully, the federal government's going to come through with some major economic relief, potentially the state will. And yes, I think we all recognize at some point, the city may have to be a participant in that for the businesses. But we also have a lot of individuals, just, you know, workers, who are going to be severely affected over the next few weeks because they're not able to work, and they're not able to earn a living. So as I said at the beginning of my comments, no one is immune to this. Everyone is suffering, some are suffering very acutely, such as our hotels, and some of our barber shops, and maybe, you know, maybe there's some restaurants. There's some things that are affected very acutely. But we're all being affected by it, and so we need to, we need to just hope it's a short duration. But whether it's short or long, I think at the end of this, the question you raise about how we, as the city, can help our residents and our business owners is very appropriate. I have a hand from Councilman Mitchell.
Mayor, Councilman Mitchell. I think it might be good advice to advise the businesses that this is going to affect, to make good documentation, try to have good records of how your business is suffering, so that when it comes to that point, it will make it easier for us to make these decisions, and it may end up helping down the road.
Okay. Do I have any other council members that would like to be heard? Dr. Gore?
Thank you, Mayor. One comment I wanted to clarify was that nothing we have discussed really is involved with the school system, the teachers or the pupils in school. And we don't have any authority, is that correct, to make any decisions? That's something that has to be decided by the Board of Education or the state.
That's absolutely correct. The schools operate under the control and authority of the Troup County Board of Education, and then they also are subject to direction from the governor. We don't have any authority to regulate the school system.
Because I know a lot of parents are just trying to plan the next month or two of their lives, and they're just going to have to wait until we hear something more from the Board of Education or the school system. I did have one other comment. We're, you know, the seriousness of this, of course, is weighing on all of us. And you have to say, why are we, why are we doing this? Let's stop for a moment and just comment on that. I think many of us have seen on television this description of the curve going up, the exponential increase in the number of cases that are proving to be positive, and people who are getting sick. And this is very real. If anyone doubts that, they shouldn't. I've paid quite a bit of attention to Tony Fauci, Dr. Fauci, who's with the National Institute of Allergy and Infectious Disease. I've listened, and I would advise anybody, if he continues to have the microphone, to listen to everything he says. Recently, there's been a local person at Emory, Dr. Carlos Del Rio, and he's made a strong point that the reason we need to act now is while it's, you know, in this exponential phase, if we do these things, we will slow it down and hopefully give the medical systems the ability to respond without becoming overwhelmed. For example, in Albany, Georgia, Phoebe Putney Hospital is just about at a point of being overwhelmed. They've had quite a few cases there in their community. And we've been fortunate, but that could change very quickly. So, you know, anyone listening or thinking about this, saying this is the heavy hand of government, we are, we're just doing what we're doing based on a public health to try to be proactive. We may look down the road two months, three months from now and be glad that we were more restrictive. Even from an economic standpoint, you have to say, yes, there's tremendous economic impact of what we're talking about today. But if half of those people who are employees at those businesses get sick and are in danger, the economic impact could be even worse. So those were the only comments I wanted to make in light of why are we doing this? And I think, maybe just a couple of more comments, so that I won't have to say this later. I think our governor has done a lot of great things on this, and I think he deserves credit for that. We're not criticizing the governor, we're just adding to what he's doing on a local level. And I think we're going to see the American people responding to the needs of equipment and the logistics of getting those things around to the facilities. But what we're talking about today is more of a preventative approach, trying to just help as much as we can to slow this down. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gore. I appreciate you sharing that. And while you were just sharing that, which is great information, Chief Dekmar passed me a note, just letting me know that we now have 10 of our police officers who have been exposed to an individual who is positive for the Corona. We're checking, we're checking, we believe, I'm sorry. But we, apparently, our officers served a search warrant on a location where there potentially was a Corona individual on quarantine. And so 10 of our officers are potentially exposed. So this, and they were awaiting tests from District 4 Public Health. But this is, you know, this is a real deal. This is a really serious threat to our community. And potentially, having 10 officers of our force who may have to be quarantined is potentially a really bad thing. So certainly, I think all of you should keep our officers and all of our first responders in your prayers, and to recognize that they're doing a very difficult job always, but especially under these circumstances. I'm looking to see if I have any other council members who would like to discuss the motion that is on the table, which is to approve the amended emergency ordinance. Is there any more discussion? I've seen Councilman Gaskin.
I think I want to reserve my comments for later. I don't think this is in addition to the amendment, now that I think about it. But I would like council members to just be mindful that there are a lot of landlords out here right now who are actively threatening residents to put them out on the street for non-payment. And I know that we can't make this part of the ordinance. I know that we don't even have jurisdiction over it. But I think collectively, as a city council, we have the ability to petition the court, the magistrate court, on behalf of the citizens of Lagrange, that when this emergency is over, because the courts aren't open right now, but they're still actively threatening people and stressing people for lack of payment in these troubling economic times. I would like council members to just join me in signing a petition. Perhaps we got Jeff Todd draw up on asking the magistrate court to grant leniency to these residents, and all residents of the city of Lagrange, as they try to get back on their feet. As you said in the opening, Mr. Mayor, nobody is going to be untouched from this. Everybody is going to hurt, everybody is going to suffer. There's no way anybody can get out of this. All we're asking is that, you know, as a council, we come, all I'm asking as a council is that we come together and we support our residents. I know that this is not part of this amendment, but I just want to make that a point, and perhaps it's something that we can discuss later on, and hopefully it'll come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gaskin. And what I will do is I will ask the city manager and the city attorney to work on potentially a letter, you know, resolution, something along those lines, and see what would be appropriate for the council members to consider. And I'm sure Ms. Kelsey can distribute that for a council member consideration prior to our next meeting, or we could, something we could even do without a meeting, since, as you say, we don't have any legal authority to address that. It would just be more of a political statement, essentially. Do I have any other council members who would like to discuss the motion to approve the ordinance that is pending before us? I'm not seeing any, so what I will do is once again- So what I will do is, once again, just go down my screen and open everybody up one at a time. If you will state your name and whether you vote yea or nay on the, on the amended emergency ordinance, I'll start with Mayor Protem Gaskin.
Yes, Nathan Gaskin, Councilman, City of La Grange. I vote yea on the amendment.
Okay. I will then turn to Councilman Gore.
Councilmember Gore votes yea.
I will turn to Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell votes yea.
And then I will turn to Councilman Edmondson.
Councilman Edmondson, oh, yea.
Okay. I will come to Councilman Arrington.
Councilman Arrington votes yea.
Okay. And then lastly, I will come to Councilman McCamey.
Councilman McCamey votes yea.
Okay. So we have six yays, no nays. So the amended emergency ordinance will pass by unanimous vote of the council. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council tonight? I'm looking to the city manager, I'm looking to the council members, I'm not seeing any. Ms. Kelsey, do you have any closing comments to make?
I would just encourage our citizens to adhere to these emergency ordinances that the council has laid out. We will do our best in communicating these out to our public, to make them aware, and also to explain to them, like Dr. Gore explained very well, the importance of why these ordinances and guidelines need to be followed.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you all very much. I think that concludes our business, and I appreciate everyone participating in this video conference. I appreciate everyone who joined us on Facebook. As a community, we are going to get through this, and we're going to emerge stronger on the, on the backside. Recognize that tonight's meeting has gone a little bit long, and we went through a lot of details, but I, I hope this has been a very good lesson in how local government operates and how we do, do transact business as the mayor, council, and the city staff. Appreciate all of the work of our city council members, all the work of our staff in getting us through these difficult times. This may not be the last time we have to have an emergency meeting and consider amendments as the circumstances seem to change on a daily basis. But as the city manager said, we will do everything that we humanly can to keep our citizens and residents informed of what's going on on the local level. Appreciate, appreciate your attention. Dr. Edmondson, would you, I know it's not in keeping with all of our tradition, but I think under the circumstances, nobody's going to get upset with me if I ask that we close the meeting with a word of prayer. Would you, would you offer a word of prayer for our community, Dr. Edmondson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Let us pray. O gracious and our heavenly Father, we ask your blessings now upon our city. We ask for your blessings to fall fresh upon our men and women that's on the streets, fighting for us, trying to keep us safe. We ask your blessing upon this United States, this entire world. Be with our government, be with each citizen. Heavenly Father, most of all, we're asking that you would be with those that has less than. Yeah, we're praying that you would be bread on the table for them, you would be a shelter over their heads. Most of all, God, keep our heads up. Let us keep our heads up and our hearts lifted to you, because we can only make this thing through you. Because, God, we heard you say, "If my people, which are called by my name, would humble themselves and pray, seek my face, turn from their wicked ways, then they will hear us, and you will heal our land." God, we're praying right now that you would heal our land, a land that's infected with sickness, a land that's infected with this terrible virus. But God, do it in the name of Jesus, do we pray. And God will be careful to give you the praise, the glory, and the honor, and forgive us for our sins, and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Edmondson. We stand adjourned.